Good evening.
Hello? Is that you, John?
Yes, that's me.
All right, I see my little green share screen button down here if I get the the need to use it tonight, I'll be ready to go, I think.
Okay.
What's up, Jim? Oh, still connecting.
Hello?
Hey, Jim.
Hi, Jim. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, some days I just can't tell.
Glenda, can you hear me?
Glenda, you're muted. You're muted.
Me?
No, Glenda.
No, I just unmuted it.
No, no, I'm trying to get, trying to get Glenda.
It's fine, I have thirty.
Okay. John, I'll let you try and connect Glenda.
Okay.
We'll carry on until we are successful. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. We have four pieces of business and a lot of discussion items this evening. Let me start with an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of public right-of-way by Cooper Highland Park Villa subdivision. Little bit of history, this has been going on for oh, Jason, the better part of two years, I suppose.
Yes, I would say about a couple of years, I think so, yes, sir.
Yeah. We were approached by the Highland Villas Property Owners Association to take over their roads. It turned out that, like some of the other roads here, they did not come over to the city at the time of incorporation. In the beginning, we thought that they owned the road, so we had Mike Button go out and inspect them. There were certain things that he wanted fixed. There were certain things that he was not willing to accept as the city, which is in your packet as part of the exclusions. Then, lo and behold, we determined that they didn't own the roads to be able to convey them to the city. We ended up doing a little research, they did some research, and it turned out the Cooper community is still on the roads. So, at that point, we sat to the side because the HOA then had to work with CCI, and that took
Enter your participant ID followed by pound, otherwise just press pound to continue.
And in the end, the Highlands Park Villa folks decided that they would spend the eleven thousand dollars and fix up the streets to the standard that Mike Button was requesting. And after that was done, then Cooper would convey the streets over to us, so that's why we're here now. In your packet, you'll see a description of all the streets and the list of exclusions that we're not going to take over. This is not something that we do every day, but we have done it in the past. If you're familiar with Memorial Drive on the east side where the post office is located, we took over that from Cooper, gosh, around two sixteen, twenty sixteen. And, but first, they had to fix the road, which they did. So that's how we got to this point in time. It's an ordinance. I know the people over at the Highlands Villas are anxious to move through this quickly, so I would probably ask for third and final next week. But at this point, if you have any questions, please ask them, particularly the legal questions, because Jason has been involved in this since inception.
I can, I can just add a little something. It, just to familiarize yourself with the neighborhood, this is the neighborhood that's next door nearby the Catholic Church off of three forty. And this, this neighborhood has the asphalt and curb and gutter throughout. And the exclusions that requested, if you can visualize that neighborhood, there's sort of a an architectural-looking guard shack. It's not, it's not used as a guard shack, I'm not even sure what it's used for, but it's a little building there. At the, at the opening of the neighborhood, there's also a lot of landscaping that's in the median. And so the, the city did not want to take responsibility for that or any of that landscaping. And I just know from talking to Mike Button that one of the major fixes out there was a drainage-related issue. A piece of the infrastructure there related to the drainage was broken, I think, and it had to be fixed. I'm not sure what else. I'd have to defer to somebody else on that. But state law allows you all to, to take on streets. The council has to do that before they become city streets. These are currently private roads. So legally, that neighborhood could throw a gate up there and, and put a guard in that shack and prevent anyone from driving on those streets, except for the people that live in that neighborhood or who otherwise have a right to, to be, to use that private road. I think this came to light for the neighborhood a couple of years ago because of their desire to have street cleaning, ice and snow removal and, and whatnot. And because they're private roads, of course, then we can't spend public tax dollars and particularly public street dollars to maintain them, which includes ice and snow removal and potholes and things like that, though I think the main concern was ice and snow. And so having brought that to light to the neighborhood, initially, that's what started them, I think, down the path of, well, what do we need to do? Will the city take these streets so that we can have that? And so that's what led us down this road. So legally, when this is done, if you accept the streets, the, they will be public streets, anyone can drive down those streets, park on the street, use, make full use of those. They've practically been that way probably since they were built anyway. But just to make sure we have legal authority to clean those streets and have public access through there, this is really what we needed to do legally to tie up all those questions. So that's what it's about.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Larry?
Well, I'll let Steve go ahead, I've got a few.
My question's really just, just trying to understand it, thank you, Larry. Just trying to understand kind of what's, I, I understand why they want us to. And I guess I'd understand why we would. But there is a cost associated with taking on additional streets, more work to be done, more ground to cover for the road department. So what, I, I guess I'm not clear on what we're benefiting by taking it.
Well, we've been taking their taxes for quite a few years, but not, not looking after their roads, they've had to do that themselves. So it's really bringing them up to snuff with every other taxpayer where we own the road.
A fairness issue there, I think, the issue.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I would probably take exception to that, Mayor and, and Steve and, and even Attorney Kelly, in the sense that there are private developments with private streets, it's not uncommon in any area or any city. And these were intended to be private when they were originally developed. I, I know that based on the mayor's comments this afternoon, that perhaps some upgrading was done in terms of construction. I, I drove all of them this afternoon and looked at them, and I have, I guess, some serious questions. They're all asphalt pavement. Asphalt pavements have a service life of probably ten years, and you know, need to start spending some money with seal coating and other things to protect the surface for longevity. It doesn't appear that any of these have received any seal coating at all for protection and longevity. There are many cracks in any number of the pavements, there is some settlement that's there, and some of that is natural with aging asphalt pavements. But the storm sewer inlets and one of the outlets, I looked at one of the outlets because it was easily accessible and short walking distance from the street, has no head wall or discharge end on it. It's merely a pipe coming out of the ground, and there's a lot of erosion behind it. Eventually, that could be, could and likely will become a maintenance issue for us. And the cost of installing a proper head wall at the outlet of that storm pipe will be fairly substantial, and we would be taking that on. I don't know the condition of the inlets, but I would say all of them would need to be inspected by our street department for acceptability and condition. All of the pipes should be TV inspected internally to know what their conditions are, whether there's sediment in there that needs to be cleaned out, whether there's collapsing that's occurred over time, to know whether we're accepting a pig in the poke. I, I, I personally think that the street should remain in private ownership. Secondly, or thirdly, as the case might be, Cooper's only offering us a quitclaim deed, I can give you a quitclaim deed for those same streets. It only means that they convey the rights and ownership that they possess to the city. I think the deed should be a warranty deed, at least, if we're going to take over the property in the right of way. And then the question is, what is the right of way? Does it reach two feet behind the back of curb? Is it five feet behind the back of curb? What about the streetlights that are out there? Do we assume responsibility for the streetlights, or will those remain private? So there's a lot of issues that I'm not ready to take this up at this time.
If I could just add one thing, or actually a couple of things, what Mr. Williams, some of the things he said are, are well taken, I do want to make sure all of you understand, city has no obligation to take the streets, that's, it's up to the city, so if you decide no, then that's fine, there's, there's no problem. You will be responsible for future maintenance and upkeep on them. They are a different type of street than what we have typically throughout the rest of Bella Vista, so in terms of their construction, the drainage, the curb and gutter in particular, so there's that. And if it's just an issue, and these things have been brought up in the past, but if it's just an issue of ice cleanup and snow cleanup, that neighborhood con, could contract with the city for that in some way, if, if they wanted to, and I mean, that would be another way for them to get the ice and snow cleaned off, we could, we could do something like that. And then I want to, I want to bring this point up because it, it will bear some relation to what you may want to do in the future, there are other neighborhoods like this. And so
There are.
In a way, you, as you make this decision, you need to think you may be making this decision and, and need to know why we're, why this is a good neighborhood and another neighborhood is not, or either be ready to have other requests, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised. But the difference mainly being here, the distinguishing factor, if I could just say that, it has been looked at by Mike Button, reviewed in terms of repair, and I don't know how much money was spent, but there was some money spent to bring it into repair, and so getting a neighborhood together to do that, you know, that would need to be done anywhere. But just, those are just some things you need to consider, I would say.
I think they spent about ten thousand getting, getting the streets fixed to, to the standard that Mike Button asked them to, is that correct?
Yes, they spent eleven thousand.
How many, what, what's the distance? What's the mileage of the streets?
I don't know, I'd have to go through and I guess you'd have to look at the plots.
Okay.
I think for sure we're talking under five miles here, though, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, I've driven them, I just didn't I didn't clock the mileage, so you say they're asphalt right now?
They're all, all curbed, they're all paved with blacktop asphalt with concrete mountable curbs on both sides. The islands have mountable curbs on them as well, or a curbing. There is a lot of storm, there's a lot of storm inlets that I guess I would have concern about without them being inspected today by Mike Button for their actual condition inside. They can deteriorate inside, and you don't see anything outside until a collapse occurs or something else happens. The other thing is that with the piping underground, I would venture to guess, based on the one outlet that I looked at, that none of them have proper head walls on the outlet to, to properly discharge the water, and so those are, will likely become issues for us maintenance-wise down the road and costly at that, at that end. And somewheres along the line, we'll be charged with taking care of them. I, I, I think without more, more investigation at this point and more information about the piping underground to know that in fact it is in good condition and that it is not plugged and, and filled with debris, I'm, I'm reticent in, in moving forward quickly.
What, it was since they, they say they're, they're asphalt now, and I don't know, if, if, if the streets would be in need of repair sometime in the near future, obviously, we'd probably, I guess, do the entire neighborhood. And I got these numbers, I don't know, probably two or three months ago, but it's about sixty-one thousand dollars per mile for asphalt repaving. And that's just what, about an inch and a half, I believe, it's not starting from a new street. And instead, also depends, you know, on the width of the rough street, things like that, and it's about twenty-one thousand dollars for chicken seal. So if we have to go in and resurface those streets, that's about what it's going to cost us per mile.
Well, all of them range between fifteen and twenty years. For all of the streets, the newest one is fifteen years old. The older ones are approaching twenty, the oldest and somewheres in between on the others. Those are, are due for seal coating at the least in order to preserve the pavement. The question is, what kind of asphalt was put down? Is it a simply inch and a half, is it two inches? Do they have good gravel base underneath them? How were they constructed? I think we need to ensure ourselves that we're not buying something that's going to cost us a lot of street money simply to keep the neighborhood happy if we were to take them over. And that, that's my concern.
So, so these streets, just the question, so it's, again, this is an HOA, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So
Both of the areas are.
So i- in regards to street repair there, it, it's the residents that would have to agree to collect the money to pay for that, it doesn't fall back to the responsibility of the developer?
Well, I, that, I, I couldn't, I can't speak to you about the relationship between the neighborhood and the developer. But it is also a part of the Bella Vista Village POA. And what happened previous to incorporation was, it was just maintained with the rest of the POA streets, which was not a difficulty because you're all, they're all private organizations working together. No, no legal impediment whatsoever. When we became a, a city, and all the streets that had been dedicated to the public became city streets, then we can use city tax dollars to maintain those streets and improve those streets. There were still these neighborhoods that had never been dedicated to the public at all, even before incorporation. This is one of those neighborhoods. So the, the, if you want to call it a problem or the difference came upon incorporation because the POA entirely got out of any street maintenance, even though, you know, they probably ought to be the ones maintaining those streets, to be quite honest, but that's up to them, they can, but they're not. So there it is.
Hey, anybody else got anything else to add?
Mayor, would you just kind of state what, what your preference or recommendation would be to counsel on this one?
Well, I've been working on it for so long. I really listened to Mike, because Mike is very good at his job. I don't think he would let us take over streets that are on the verge of falling apart. I do, I do have some concern about the drainage, I think Larry brings up a good point.
I do, too.
And then a thing, I think maybe we should ask Mike and his crew to go out and have a look at them. Because he's right, you can't see inside. They may look fine on the outside, but they may be collapsing on the inside. So that's a good point.
I agree.
I think that, the other thing, a big issue is the head walls on the outlets of the drainage systems. On block four, I went and looked at the outlet there, and it's nothing but a pipe sticking out of the ground with a lot of erosion behind it and no head wall to retain the pipe and hold it in its place to dissipate the stormwater velocity coming out, so it's got quite a washout at the end. I did not look at the other ones, I ran out of time today to do that. But I suspect they're going to be similar in nature, some of them on the south end of the, of the large development of townhouses have just runouts on the curb, in other words, they have a break-open curb with a drainage way flowing it overland. Those may or may not become a problem down the road. If we have a big belly washer or several of them, they could become maintenance issues for us in the short term. The outlets of the storm pipes will be an issue for us longer term in terms of maintenance on those.
Okay. I'll get to Mike tomorrow, and I'll ask him to go out and have a look at the pipes. I've been taking notes. Larry, do you have all these locations actually written down somewhere?
I've got them noted on a map where the inlets are, but you drive down the street, you can see them pretty visibly. So the manhole inlets are easily to spot on the, on the street. But the inlets, the pipelines, if you can get in the manhole and lamp them or light them with the, with the light and the mirror, you can see quite a distance, sometimes a hundred feet or so down the pipe. Bigger the pipe, the easier the visual, visual inspection. They are confined spaces, so I don't know if Mike is prepared for that in terms of the inlet chambers themselves. But the outlets can be inspected from the outside with a lamp looking in to see how they are going backwards, so you might be able to look at quite a bit of the system from just what I, I observed out there.
Okay, everybody comfortable if I talk to Mike in the morning?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Good points, though, Larry, really.
Yeah.
Okay, Glenda, are you there? You're still muted. John, oh, okay, Glenda, your mute is gone, are you there? Glenda?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. Good.
Okay, I had to, I had to come in with my phone, I'm not sure what's going on with my audio, but yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. I'm going to go into one of the discussion items so that Glenda can get back to her family this evening, and that's the elected officials' compensation that Mr. Fowler's brought up. If you remember, the last time we talked about this, we agreed that the current ordinance needs a lot of work, in fact, it should probably be repealed and brought in with something that's not quite as convoluted. And so the administration was asked to address that and bring it back to council. The current plan is to start working on that in February. And the reason for that is, the HR department at the moment is very busy finishing off the medical enrollment. And we're on the verge of cutting over to a new payroll system. And that will probably have bugs in it that will take us into January. So we're going to start it in February. So Doug, I don't know if you had some particular questions or thoughts that you could share with Glenda?
No, I really don't have any questions. You know, I have some thoughts, but they're just kind of running around in my head right now, I really haven't you know, sketched anything out, any type of an outline. I just know that we need to, you know, we need to get this fixed. And I just, I wanted to go ahead and bring up the topic and start moving in that direction, because I think it's going to take a little while to do that. It's going to take some research. I don't know what Glenda's, you know, approach is going to be, you know, to addressing it, I don't know if it might be a good idea to form somewhat like of a, a committee, you know, it could be, be a couple of people, and maybe, maybe me working with Glenda or another council member, or two of us, however you want to approach it.
I wouldn't have any council members, Doug, because you're talking about your own salaries.
Well, it, it, it wouldn't be for the generation of what the salary should be. It would be more the generation of an ordinance for the process to determining what, what a salary should be. You know, I'm not going to try, sit here and try to set, and at the end of the day, you know, having said that, but again, it doesn't have anything to do with setting a number. It's, it's, it's the timing, and it's the process. But at the end of the day, we do vote on whether to give ourselves raises or not. Sure. Having said that. But, but again, that's, that's not where I was coming from on this.
Okay, Glenda, what are your thoughts?
Doug, one of the things that we're going to be doing in 2021, which is part of the HR budget for 2021, is we are engaging John Johansson Group, who works a lot with a lot of the Northwest Arkansas employers, including other cities. One of the things we could do in that search and the process for 2021 is what, what typical in Northwest Arkansas? If that's what you want to look at, it's like, what are other cities doing as far as ordinances or processes, or how do they go about the process? I think they're pretty wide open to whatever we want to engage them to do, so now's the time to talk about it, so we can begin to formulate, like, what do we want from them?
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a, a, a good idea. Some of the things you just spoke of, those, those were things that I was going to do myself. You know, look around Northwest Arkansas and see what the process was at the other cities, see what the timing, you know, was at the other cities, and, you know, again, just to start to formulate a plan on, you know, putting an ordinance together. Once again, I've already said it a couple of times, my discussion tonight didn't have anything to do with what salary should be. It was all about what the process should be and what the ordinance should look like and how it should be written. So.
Okay, yeah. Let's leave it with Glenda at the moment. She has a lot of contacts in her SHRM organization that will certainly help, yes, Larry?
When you're done, Mayor, I've got a question about it. The question is, the Johansson Group, we're retaining them to do specifically what for the city?
One of the thing, well, the main, the main focus is going to be actually set up pay grades for the city so that, for each position, so they'll be looking at each position, they'll be looking at pay grades and doing comparisons to the Northwest Arkansas area. So they'll be looking at each position, they'll be looking at pay grades and doing comparisons to the Northwest Arkansas area. And, um, so we'll have a very formal process of pay grades for each role in each department. And that way, when we look at like, okay, so for 2021, are we looking at two or three percent increases? We can look at the salary structures they create for us based on everything they know about the jobs that they've set up at this time. And we can do like a two percent adjustment to the pay grades instead of every year kind of scrambling to look at what should we do in this department, what should we do in that department, that kind of thing.
So we've not done anything like this historically for the city?
From everything I've seen, it's never been done for specifically for Bella Vista before.
Are other cities in Northwest Arkansas doing this or have they done it?
Yes, um, I've gotten some feedback from a few of the cities like Rogers and Bentonville. And, um, I know that Johansson has worked with a lot of those same cities. So I think they'll kind of come out of the gate with some basic information and basic contacts, job descriptions to compare to. So I don't think we're going to waste a lot of time and money starting from ground zero. I think they're going to be able to go kind of right into the meat of it and, um, be able to work with us very closely to get something set up. Like I said, the goal is to get something formal in place so that going forward, we can look more at an adjustment for a department or overall adjustment instead of each individual position each year.
You know, to your point, Glenn, I mean, this feels like this something is something that would fit in this, you know, analysis that they're doing. It's a little bit different, you know, we're not setting job grades, things like that or pecking order. But yeah, I mean, if they're willing, if they're willing to take this on, uh, I I I'm certainly not opposed to any assistance. I'm still going to do some of my own research and develop a point of view because at some point I'm going to have to anyway. But.
Well, absolutely. And, you know, here's the thing, I think, it's like, if we don't ask, we don't know. So we might as well go in with all of our asks upfront and see what they can do for us.
Okay.
Do we have a proposal from them to do this and is it budgeted?
Um, what I did last.
It's in the 2021.
Yeah, we actually. What I did for my budget this year is we took some of the money that was in a kind of a canned system that had been purchased prior for the city. And I replaced that with this salary study. And I checked with Johansson and I said, give me a a broad view of what you think it might cost. And they said X dollars up to X dollars. So I put the maximum dollars in my budget, assuming we probably wouldn't be at max because we're not a giant city at this point. So we should be able to do a lot of work within the budget that's set for 2021.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Peter, I had something I wanted to add. I do think that's a good idea about the Johansson Group. For elected officials, I have a specific idea I'm just going to throw out to everyone. What I think you should do is, uh, review elected officials every odd year, 2021, 2023, 2025, for example. And you should decide what you're going to do, if anything, I mean, you may decide not to change it by the end of August. And it should be effective for January 1 of the next year. So for example, in this year, you'd figure out by the end of August what you're doing. And it would be effective January 1, 2022. That way, it's good for the budget because when you go to do the budget, you know what everybody's making headed all the elected officials. You've already figured it out. And it starts exactly beginning of the year. So it's good from an accounting perspective, keeping track of things. And it's also good from the point of view, you know, originally, when they made up this ordinance, one of the things they're worried about is people deciding to run for office and knowing what the job paid. So what has happened once or twice is people be scrambling around trying to get something done in time for people to run for office and failing to do that. I think this last time around was an example where we did something about pay after people had already signed up. This way, it's 2022, you decided to run for office and you know what a councilman makes or a mayor makes or a city clerk makes. It's already been established well ahead of time. So the general public has noticed, so to speak, so they can make their decision. So it'd be a very organized kind of thing. It would be good for the budget. And one of the advantages you use in the odd years is I think one of the things that happens, if you're trying to decide right before the election, some people are up for reelection and they're very nervous about it and maybe not thinking clearly. Other people aren't up for reelection or in a completely different position because we rotate it. So I just think it'd be an organized way of doing it and, uh, and would work well with the budget. And, uh, and and would just be a good system. That's just my two cents worth I thought I'd throw out there.
Sure. To see what you find with other cities.
I do, I particularly like the idea that you look at it in August with the idea that, okay, so we're going to think about this now. It's going to be effective January 1, which is kind of the whole part of the next year's, um, plan as far as budget, et cetera. So you're not kind of last minute trying to figure out what you're doing. I like that idea of August.
Okay, let's compare that to the other cities too, Glenda. Larry, you wanted to say something again?
I I guess one comment, uh, with for Mr. Flynn is that the the councilmen probably are not a lot different in Bella Vista in terms of duties and responsibilities than some of the other cities. But our elected officials that work full time in the mayor's position and the city clerk's position, those are somewhat different and, uh, need to be reviewed on a different basis than the council perhaps. As an example, while we have thirty plus thousand here, I don't know that some of the involvement, even the responsibilities in the council are similar to communities of that size because we don't have a lot of departments that other cities like us in our size have. So we we don't get involved, we don't have responsibilities for, um, which is much different and not as complex as they are in, let's say Bentonville or Rogers because of how they're organized. So I just wanted to kind of differentiate between our full-time folks or or full-time duty folks. And I know the clerk is not full-time, but he kind of spends a lot of time there and we treat him as a full-time guy anyway. And he responds, uh, so willingly. And I want to thank him for that. But our duties as as a council are really reduced much probably from what the councils in Rogers and our and Bentonville, Springdale are, even though our size is pretty substantial.
That's very true. We don't have water, we don't have parks and rec, we don't have our own electrical company.
Right. We don't have a lot of things. Yeah.
Okay, anybody got anything else to add before we move on? Okay, I'm going to jump back then into the agenda. For item B, a resolution adopting a city budget for the city of Bella Vista for the calendar year 2021, appropriating money for each item of expenditure and for other purposes. Carrie sent out and updated, and I suspect the final last week for you. There were two changes. We rolled over $30,000 for the police department fencing. We don't think that's going to be completed by the end of the year. And in addition, we added $10,000 into audit because we are going to have to have a single audit for the million dollar grant that we got from the CARES Act. Anytime that you receive $750,000 or more of federal money, you have to have a special audit on that project. So we've set money aside for it and, um, that's that. And it, and nothing else had changed. Larry?
Can we, can we include in that grant money, the costs for that audit as a part of those expenditures?
Good luck with that.
Okay. It's administrative.
Mayor Christie, can I, can I talk about that a little bit, uh, before we move on? I was thinking I might, uh, want to do some brainstorming with the rest of the city council, uh, later on in discussion items, but it kind of fits here. You mentioned the, uh, the grant money that we've received from the CARE Act. And, uh, you know, we were, uh, able to be reimbursed for the largest single item that we submitted for, which was, uh, police department salaries, payroll taxes and benefits. And that really turns out, uh, in my mind, to be a a windfall to the city. And, uh, it's, it's not often, uh, a city gets that this opportunity. And I was thinking about those monies and they they can come in quietly and kind of shuffle off into the general reserve. But I wonder if if, uh, the city council might be interested in entertaining with me ways to use, uh, some of that money, not all of it. It's, uh, it's, it's a substantial sum of money. But ways we might be able to use a portion of that money to invest in Bella Vista, especially in terms of some of the things that have suffered during the pandemic. This has been tough on a lot of businesses. It's been tough on our churches. It's been tough on our charities. And, uh, I think it would be totally consistent with the CARE Act, the source, the original source of funding that brought us this windfall that, uh, I think it'd be completely consistent with the CARE Act if we took a portion of those monies and figured out how we can use them in our city. And I've, I've studied some other cities that are doing things very similar to this. So these programs are out there. We have no limitations on what we can use that money for, aside from things, uh, I'm sure Jason would say, well, there's certain things the government can't do with money. And he'll keep us, uh, out of the weeds on that, I'm sure. But if you don't mind, what I'd like to do, just as a straw man proposal and not to take it too far, but just to get people thinking about this and then maybe get a, uh, get an answer to the question of when should we, if we were going to do something like this, should it be a part of the budget for 2021? Or should we just, uh, ponder this for a while? And if we decide there's something we want to do along these lines, then we would come back to the budget and, uh, make the adjustments at whatever time that's necessary. If you don't mind, I'd like to try something. I'd like to try to share my screen. Uh, let's see if, uh, if I have any luck with this.
And my only caveat to that, Steve, is that money has helped us for the next five years in our capital program stay above the 25%.
Yes, sir.
We're going to go through this, then we probably want to do it after the fact and we want to make darn sure that we don't sink ourselves four or five years out below the 25%.
Well, I I appreciate that. And I I think what you're saying in a sense is, gosh, uh, already got some ideas for for that money. We have capital needs already and we ought to be applying them to those capital needs. But I I wanted to go beyond that if I could. Just share a slide with you and then try not to have too much of a reaction to it. But this is a proposed, uh, straw man's view. This is just to to do some brainstorming, to throw some ideas into the pool. How do we take some of those funds and and use them consistent with the CARE Act? These are some ideas. First result, first responders hazard bonus. I don't know if I've got these numbers right here. Uh, I've, I've got 60. Whoop. Did everybody's screen just go blank?
It is.
Yeah. Let's try a new share.
Okay, now there's already been a bonus for the fire guys already.
Right.
It came in on a different one, if you remember, it was about 2,000 apiece.
Yeah, okay.
And that we just just dispersed, it was like a grand of what, 250,000 or something?
Yeah, something like that, Larry, yeah.
Screen share has failed to start. Well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just cruise down my list here. I won't be able to do it apparently by, uh, sharing the screen. Unless, can you guys see that?
A suggestion, a suggestion might be is to send it to, uh, to Wayne and have him send it out.
It's working.
I would do that, okay. If we could, just just for a few minutes here, what, maybe it's not 60 people then. Fire department's been taken care of, maybe the EMTs have been, uh, police officers though. Whatever between police officers, EMT dispatchers, uh, who haven't, uh, been able to, uh, see any of those previous relief type measures, uh, perhaps we we would do something for them. The animal shelter is something that they had to come to us recently and ask us for more money. And maybe we would put something in reserve for the next two years we'd set aside. I I've dropped a number in here, $25,000 for our animal shelter. It's something that we have a responsibility to, and maybe we would reserve some money for them. Community outreach programs, I'm thinking about our churches. A lot of them, several of them do food banks. And we do have people in need in this community. People have lost their jobs and need food. We've seen the Catholic Church as an example, uh, have a great outreach program where they fed a lot of people, a lot of meals. And if we could do something with some of our local outreach programs, any of the programs that service Bella Vista residents, maybe we could find 25 of them and and gift them each a thousand dollars. How about Bella Vista 501Cs, our, uh, museum, our, uh, friends of the library? What am I leaving out, our recycle center? If we could find, uh, I I put 10 in here, maybe it's five, maybe it's $2,500 each. It doesn't, it's not enough to change the game, but it's it's a thought. Small business grants, uh, small businesses that are run from homes. Bean programs across the country where cities are trying to assist their small businesses who have been through a very difficult time here. And if we had a grant process, an application process, maybe we give away 50 of those at a thousand dollars each. Same thing, small businesses, but that are brick and mortar. Uh, e- even probably a a greater challenge for them, uh, or at least an equal challenge. And they've got a footprint that they're trying to maintain. The Bella Vista Business Association. If we did something similar to what I was talking about with the animal shelter and we reserved money for them for the next two years, give them something to work with. They have a hard time really with funding, uh, any of their ideas. And if we could do something for them, it would help the entire community of of small businesses in Bella Vista. And then finally, I I put a line item in here for program administration. So who's going to take all these applications and who's going to measure them and weigh them and 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 sort them and figure out what we're going to do with this? There's, there's some administration costs associated with that. It could be a temporary hire, it could be a temporary part-time hire. Total cost of that then is $335,000. This is just, again, a brainstorm. We, uh, we received a windfall of 732,000. This is less than half of that. I think it's consistent with the CARE Act. I I don't have any intent on the next meeting to do anything official like, uh, in proposing this. But I I wanted to get the idea in front of you guys and let you guys be thinking about it and and maybe, uh, see, see what your initial reaction might be.
Have you ever done grants, Steve?
I've applied for grants.
But but have you ever been on the other end of it where you're actually? Okay, I have for the last six years with the Bella Vista Foundation. And you need, um, dedicated people to be able to go through all the grants, the applications and whatnot.
Right.
One idea might be to give the Bella Vista Foundation a certain amount of money with some guidance and let them work their way through the process that they've already got in play. Mr. Kelly, are there any ideas here that are counter to what we can do?
Well, there, there are a lot of things you can do in the area of contracts for services to the citizens. And that's how we've managed to to get money to the animal shelter. We've, we've bought equipment that goes to the recycling center with agreement, lease agreements where they agree to provide public services. So those things, those contracts, uh, for service are a way to, I don't want to say get around, but I I mean, a way to not just be giving the money without any sort of, uh, public benefit. The grant programs the city could run, it needs to be more than, again, I I mean, it would need to have program requirements, it would need to be, uh, people would need to file reports, we would need to have someone to administrate all that. And we would need to make sure that there's a public purpose, uh, being accomplished through those. I mean, governments have grant programs, we know that, so that there's, there are. I mean, governments have grant programs, we know that, so that there's, there are ways to do that, no way, nothing that we've done here in the city of Bella Vista, but that mean we can't. In terms of like for the Bella Vista Business Association in particular, state constitution was amended. Three or four years ago that freed up our ability to provide funding to chambers of commerce. It's basically what the Bella Vista Business Association is, to promote economic development. So I can see a way to to potentially work in that area. Obviously, if you want to program, provide money to administrate these programs, the city could do that through an employee or through a contractor. Direct, the the, just a couple of things that just initially caused me a little legal concern would be the 501Cs. If it could not just be a, we're gonna donate money to you because it's a good cause, we like the Boy Scouts, we like the Girl Scouts, we like United Way. It it couldn't be that, it would have to be some, unless it's in the area of economic development. It would have to be some sort of a contract for service. And also, if we're gonna talk about monies to churches, that raises First Amendment issues. I think if there was a general program that would not necessarily exclude churches. So if you had secular food banks in addition to church-related food banks. I think we could legitimately do things for food banks in general, even though it was a church. We, there's been a lot of. Public-private cooperation and some some court legal development in that area. Regarding religious schools and money and things like that, so there is an avenue in there, we need to be very cautious. And obviously, your your first responders, you control their pay, you can make whatever pay decisions you want to make in terms of bonus, as long as it's approved by the council. That's something you could do, we could also look at amending the animal shelter agreement if if the city wants to. Modify that and and work in that area, there's a way to do that, so. So I hope that answers your question and that's just on first blush and and obviously the details are very critical.
Yeah, because we, today, Steve, we also support the museum and we also support the Bella Vista Television Station. So, but, tell you what, why don't you send this out through. Our esteemed city clerk and have him distribute it. And let's ask everybody to put their thinking caps on and come back and revisit this. We're down to the wire on the budget itself, I really don't want to delay any further on the budget. But that doesn't mean that we can't change the budget next year as we move forward, how does that sound?
It it sounds reasonable to me, I I know the ink's not even dry on the check for $732,000. I hate to think that it's locked up in any way yet, so I I I wanted to kind of introduce this this discussion, I I appreciate everybody's consideration.
And I I want to thank Steve as well, he also reached out to Mark Hayes. So that he could understand exactly how this whole grant thing was put together. And I think that that probably gave you some enlightenment as well when you were talking to him.
It did, I I really want, I really wanted to be able to trust that 732,000, that they weren't gonna come claw back at some point, it seemed. It seemed a leap to me that we were gonna be reimbursed for something that was part of our budget already, but it's true. It's not just Bella Vista, it's happening all across the state, in fact, they said many states are doing this as well, so. It's real, it's a real money, it's our money, we get to do with it as as we see fit for the residents of Bella Vista.
I don't have a problem with any of that, but how come every time we get a dollar or two ahead, we're in such a sweat to spend it?
We're not, we're not, I don't think we are at all.
Hey, we we just got the money and you want to give half of it away, I'm not saying it's a bad deal, okay? But the year is just starting and we've got, you know, things coming up, we got stuff internally, including roads. You know, with all the things going on, you're gonna do something with the bridge outside the office, you're gonna mess around with the curve below Concordia. We don't have a bottom line clue on what's that's gonna cost, but you know, every time we get a buck ahead, we have to spend it now. You know, that could sit for six months and do just as much good then as it would right now, we just got this thing about we get ahead, let's spend it.
I I appreciate that, Jim.
I can see it, I'm not against it, I'm just that every time we get a dollar to the good, we want to spend it.
No, I I don't think that's true, in fact, the story of my life is if I got a windfall for $100. I might figure out how I'm gonna spend 50 of it now and 50 of it's gonna go into savings for later. But what I, well, I think the principle of it is not that we're trying to spend it, that we're trying to use the funds consistent with the pandemic. And cost in our community and how do we kind of re-strengthen and renew this community after a very tough period economically?
And I would, I would have to support what Steve is saying in the sense that I think the CARES money was intended to be. A funneling program by the local community to feed back into the needs of the community based upon its uniqueness. And what its particular needs were, and so I I would support the concept, we needed, we need to flush it out, we need to figure out. What's workable, what's not, some things may not be workable. In your program, but I think that, I think they deserve a lot of discussion and I would endorse the concept anyway.
Okay.
I just was, you know, I I think the thoughts are good, my my initial concern is administration, you know, and. You know, being sure the money would be distributed, you know, in a fair, equitable way and people that really needed it, received it. And not every, every time we spend money is it a spend, I mean, you know, I I look at a lot of expenditures as investments. And I think this would be an investment in the community, not just a, you know, spending money. But, yeah, I just, you know, I think it's worth a look.
I never said it wasn't, I just said you need to slow down a little bit.
So anyway, again, I look at it as an investment, not a spend, so.
Okay, now if you have any more questions or any questions at all in the budget, please get to Kerry or get to the department heads or get to me. Because we're coming down to the end of it now and it's a good budget.
As a question, the latest we can adopt this is in January.
Yeah, but I don't want to go there because then you've got to carry over into the new year and from an accounting perspective, it gets very ugly. Every city wants to avoid that, so you want to be able to go into the new year with your new budget, you don't want to carry over. It's not fun.
Legally, it is till the end of January, Larry, just to, but it does create the accounting issues.
It's an accounting nightmare.
That's fine, but I think it'll probably get done, but it has been a pretty short window here, I mean, there's a lot of detail in this. And I would just, you know, for instance, I don't know, we are, we just gonna kind of skate over like the the budget, I don't have any issues with it, I just want to make a couple of comments, you know?
Sure, you know, you can make your comments, but Doug, this has been the way it's been done for the last four years. And we even extended it by a month two years ago because we used to try and get it closed in November, now we've moved it to December. And, I mean, if you've got comments and questions, ask them. Don't wait till the final, you know, the 11th hour, when I've been asking you.
Need a lecture, I mean, I really don't, you know, I mean, this was a short window, you know, it takes a lot of time to get through this, it is a short window. We got it on Thursday. Before, like, like Thanksgiving, you know, and I got back, had like a day to look at it and. I'm just saying, I'm not even gonna say anything negative, I was just gonna say, I think it's a responsible budget, you know, you didn't even let me talk, right? But, lot of detail, I think the detail's really good, you know, I mean, you can look at each, Kerry sent me the Excel files. Saturday, you know, which which is great, which is what I wanted, I had his chance to start going through all of them, you know, just looking at the different tabs. Like I said, anybody that looked at all those that knows how, think they'd be pretty impressed with the detail that's in there, I mean, every every penny is accounted for. And, you know, just a couple of things, just a couple of numbers, because it's not rolled up in the PowerPoint deck that we got. In case anybody's curious, our payroll actually ended up just like increasing 3.8% this year. And for anyone that thinks about payroll, that isn't just salary and wages, you know, those are social security taxes, overtime, what it costs is Medicare. Vacation, sick time, so all payroll is like 3.8%, so, you know, that was held in check pretty nicely. Was there a target for salary and wages this year that you were trying to work within?
Yeah, we were trying to stick with 3% to 4%. 3% was the was the real challenge put in front of all the department heads. There were some that had to have some changes in the actual base. Particularly in in the streets department, for example. We've had a hard time being able to get entry-level people and one of the problems we've got is we don't compete very well. But we can't bring it up to what the other cities offer, we don't have the funds for it and we certainly can't meet the construction industry. But yes, there was a 3% bogey for the most part.
No, I was just gonna say, so the salaries and wages, and I, this is no, no issue with me, I want people to be compensated fairly. But it looks like salary and wages ended up at at 4.5%. And again, I don't, I want people to be able to earn a living, so I don't, I don't have, you know, a big problem with that, but that's where, that's where it ended up. And I just wondered what the the parameters were, as far as the benefits are concerned. The medical insurance actually, and I know that our policy, I guess, went up 5%, but I guess based upon. Who is taking advantage of our medical insurance and who is not. That number actually ended up being 3.9% increase versus prior year, because I guess some people aren't taking it. And then there was some conversation over dental insurance because what? Our medical was 5%, what was our dental, dental off the top of our head was like 8%. But, you know, it's like, well, is that 13% for our benefits? And it's like, no, those are not additive because dental insurance is such a smaller bucket versus medical. So the the dental insurance actually ended up increasing 5.8%. The actual numbers, our medical increased $41,000 and our dental was $4,500. So you can see there's a big difference between the two, because there weren't any numbers in the PowerPoint deck behind those. And I I was just looking as as well in the admin spreadsheet, there are. Some things in there, you know, I I noticed you had the farmer's market, you had the APT tournament. And I saw where you had the museum in there, I can't remember what else. I don't know if there are any intentions of someone writing grant applications for the AMP Commission or not. But if if that's gonna happen, it needs to happen because we are also in the process of setting our budget. And we have some parameters around where, around how much we want to put towards grants for. Events, you know, that might be taking place in Bella Vista, we need, we need to know if those are gonna be coming forth, so. And one last question, I noticed our Arkansas Municipal League Insurance actually declined. Why is that?
Is that the building insurance, the auto insurance?
I I don't know, it was just Arkansas Municipal League, I saw. Maybe, maybe I had that backward, I mean, I can look it up again, but it didn't, I don't, it just seemed odd that that number would go down.
Well, Kerry will have the details for you if you want to give her a call.
I think the, I think the rates are claims-based from the previous year. And it carries forward then for the future year in their rate setting, but I know Kerry mentioned that. Workers' comp was a was a jump because of the claims for us in some departments, so.
Yeah, workers' comp took quite a jump. Okay, let's move on. The third piece of business is a resolution authorizing budgetary funding transfers between departments in the 2020 annual city budget. If you remember, this is something that we do every December, so that. When Kerry is closing out the books, if there's a shortfall somewhere, then we're able to move money from one department to another. We typically don't do it very often, and when we do do it in January, we send out to council. A spreadsheet showing you what the actual transactions have been. The only thing that really comes to mind at this point is we have a 27th payroll period this year. Normally, there's 26 in the year and we didn't budget for it because we had assumed that it would be the first. Payroll period because it came in on the first and second of January. Only after we had finished with the 2020 budget did ADP tell us that they don't process over a weekend. Particularly over a weekend that's got a holiday in it. So they're going to process it prior to New Year's Day, so that suddenly stuck a 27th payroll period. In in the year 2020. So far, we look pretty good, Kerry's been sending out updates to the department heads for the last four months, showing them. How are they doing on their underruns elsewhere so that they can be able to cover it? So I think at this point, we're in pretty good shape for it, but this. Or that would be an example where if somebody was underrunning and somebody else was overrunning, then we'd simply move the monies in order to balance the budget. Otherwise, we would have to have special council meetings when everybody's on vacation. It's just not practical, so we've been doing this, well, even the previous administration, Frank used it as well. Any thoughts at all? Okay, the last is something that came in at the last minute. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a 2021 extension. Of the interagency service agreement for the operation of the Benton County Convenience Center Program in the amount of 24,567.49. We already have an existing agreement where we pay. In fact, every city pays 50 cents per resident per census. Towards the funding of the of the waste management program. And it looks after convenience centers that are around in Northwest Arkansas, it looks after the big one. That's on the outskirts of Bentonville, almost creeping into Centerton. What has happened is there was a lawsuit that's been bubbling for the last couple of years. Between Benton County Solid Waste and Boston Mountain Solid Waste. And part of the fees are from waste management that go to both organizations. And as part of the ongoing legal dispute, those fees have been frozen. So what has happened is suddenly there's a huge hole in the budget of the Benton County Solid Waste. All the mayors sit on that board, we went through the finances, we were gonna have to close most of the convenience centers. And lay off people in the actual main one over by Centerton. We had a great deal of angst over doing that, primarily because we could see the cul-de-sacs. Filling up with garbage and everything else, tires and paint. And we felt that it was responsible for all the cities and the county to get together and shore up this, this. Critical part of trying to keep us look beautiful. And everybody agreed that they would do it and bring it back to their councils. So we would, if you look on the actual guts of it, towards the back, you can see. The allocations based on percentage of populations for the cities. The only one that's not going to be paying is the city of Springdale. They just recently took over Bethel Heights and they're going to be encouraging the Bethel Heights folks to use the convenience centers. Down in Washington County, not to use the Benton County ones. So this, as I say, has cropped up sort of at the last minute, you can see under. Page eight of eight, article nine, the signatures where all the mayors would have to sign after it's been approved. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, I gave it to Mr. Kelly to overview. Jason, I don't think there were, there was anything in there that caused any concern.
No, sir. The, because of the amount of money, that's why the council has to be brought into this. It's a renewal of the existing agreement, so it's not anything you have to do a bid waiver on, I'm getting technical here, but. Because of the amount of the contract, it is over the 20,000 threshold and so that's why we needed to bring it to you.
And what's, what's the impact dollar-wise, Mayor Christie?
It's 24,000 and change, 24,567.49.
And and you said that was allocated to the cities and the county based on a population count or something?
Yes, that's right, if you look in the packet. On page six of eight and seven of eight, you can see the cities. For example, Bentonville is 48,006, Centerton is 14,005. Rogers is fifty nine thousand, Silent Springs is fourteen thousand. And it's all breaking, it's broken out by the um, by the population, the percentage of the population.
And that was, that was the last census values, not estimated counts, right?
Yeah. And should the um, should the fees be freed up in the year twenty twenty one? The board has recommended that we take the leftover monies or the monies that are still coming in because it's, it's billed on a quarterly basis. And we put that into a reserve for the Benton County Solid Waste. That reserve is getting a little thin at the moment. And um, so we all felt that would be a good, a good place to put it if the fees are released. I really don't think they will be. As I mentioned, it's billed quarterly. So Carrie has built this into, into the budget.
Mayor Christie, these convenience centers, uh, fortunately, I haven't had a need to uh, to uh, patronize one of them yet, so I'm not real familiar with them. But I do know this, you know, we had a, a stump dumps uh, places for green waste to go in Bella Vista for a long time. Those have been taken away. And I've seen people trying to figure out, what are my options now? I, I don't have that locally. Do I have it somewhere else? And I think one of the things that would be helpful for the residents of Bella Vista is if we could kind of take uh, inventory of what the options are for people. In this case, I see it doesn't look like it's green waste at all. It's kind of household items and that kind of thing. But how do we, how do we present this so that a resident who's trying to figure out, what are my options for getting rid of my leaves, my toilet, my hot water heater, my lumber? What are my options? Uh, whether they're good or bad options, these are your options. I think it'd be great if we could do that on the city website somehow.
I believe there's a link already. I'll ask Cassie that, that goes over to the Benton County Solid Waste. I know Sally gets probably one or two calls a week about it. And she's got a listing of the prices and everything else. Because at the convenience centers, you are able to take leaves, um, limbs off trees and that kind of thing. It used to be that you could take a lot of your limbs down to Bentonville and they would grind them for a price. But they have run out of space, so they're only doing it now for Bentonville uh, residents. Silent Springs has another convenience center and they too do something similar. We looked at the possibility of having a, a convenience center here. The only real good place for it is right behind the recycling center. And the problem is it's on a flood plain. So that kind of killed that idea. We thought up maybe on seventy one up by the um, the wastewater. Because Cooper has some land up there, but there was no effective way to try and shield it from the traffic so that it wouldn't look ugly. But yeah, sure, we can.
I, I know, I know residents of Bella Vista would appreciate it. I don't know if we've seen a spike in illegal dumping. I know it happens from time to time. It's probably more prevalent now that we don't have a stump dump to work with. I was just looking at the document though, uh, Mayor Christie. And I, I found that the, they were referring to Article Six is what uh, acceptable materials uh, can go to a convenience center. And at the bottom of the list, it has all other materials will be excluded from the program, including but not limited to green yard waste such as tree limbs, leaves, grass clippings, brush, et cetera. So that, you can't go to a convenience center with uh, with leaves or anything green.
Well, that's wrong then because actually you can go to Rogers. Because I've been there and I've looked at it. And they do take the green waste in.
Okay, well, I, I'm just going by what uh, our documents are that we're going over right now, but.
Now, you know, you know, in, in retrospect, I think they probably called, if I remember correctly, they're calling that um, oh gosh, the name just, you know, where you take green waste and you, and you turn it into dirt over time, compost. Yep. I think they're calling that a compost center as a matter of fact.
Where, where is it? I, I've been down to Benton County Waste Center several times. I don't remember seeing that area on that. Is it on a separate property?
No, it's at the Rogers one. The big one that's over near Centerton, I don't believe takes it. It takes a lot of the big items like the TVs um, and the tires, all that kind of stuff and paints.
Paint, paint and other things.
Yeah, they take lead paint. They really are God sent. Otherwise, you know what's gonna happen to the paint. Somebody's gonna go out in the bush and dump it. And that's not a good thing.
Uh, one, one thought is that, that you can contract with our trash hauler for yard waste pickup. You pay by how many dumpsters you want. You can have one trash dumpster or two or three and you pay by how many you have. The pickup time goes from, I think, beginning of April to the end of November. And so you can put as many out as you've contracted for. But uh, green, green, green stuff like trimmings from shrubs and branches, they have to be cut up to a specified length, but uh, those can be put in there along with leaves, grass, other things. So it's available to all of the members in Bella Vista through our trash hauler as a yard waste disposal. And that's a separate fee. They, they bill you once a year. You pay for it based on how many units, how many trash units you, carts you want to have, so. It's a convenient thing.
The area behind the sand and salt storage building on two seventy nine, when we had the, what, straight line winds, had all the downed trees, didn't we pile up a bunch of stuff back there and grind it up?
We did. Yeah, most of it got hauled away, but you're right. We had quite a hill of it back there and we've been slowly burning it. We tried to give it away and nobody wanted it. We even approached some of the companies that actually dry it out. And then they sell it to the farmers for their stalls. And unfortunately, because most of it's oak, they don't have any interest. They, they prefer pine.
Yeah, soft words.
Yep. Okay, let's go into the discussion items. We have quite a few. We've got Sunset Road. Sent, sent something out to everybody today, so uh, in case you haven't had the opportunity to read it. Doug, do you want to give an overview, please?
Sure. Along, they've uh, backfill from the wall is completed up to the curb. And you can see, or up to the shoulder, you can see in the photos I sent that they have installed and covered the water line and it got tested today. I haven't heard the results of that. But uh, as soon as it gets, as soon as it passed the pressure test, they'll buy the P O A out to observe for a couple hours. Once they sign off, the, the, the excavated area will be filled with gravel and then in, will be prepped for the guard rail and the asphalt uh, road cover, so getting closer.
Good. Any questions for Doug? Okay, let's move on to a trails update, Doug.
Hi, Mayor. I've got a guest on with us. Do you mind if we go septic discussion?
Okay, let's do that. Linda, this is yours, where we're looking at um, an ordinance that Mr. Kelly put together for you, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to provide for the construction of certain minimum size septic systems based on the square footage of the residential structure to be served and for other purposes. Linda, do you want to talk us through this?
Well, uh, I think Doug and I had some conversations with you all last month at the work session about the issue where builders are going in for a two bedroom septic permit to the health department because that's all they can get on that particular lot. Getting a building permit that says it's two bedrooms and has, oh, a den and an office and a whatever to get around the building permit approval and then marketing the house as a four bedroom house, which down the road is potentially gonna cause a lot of problems because buyers are buying these as four bedroom houses. And when we get to we have a lot of non-functioning septic systems, people are gonna have a problem. So I think we need to come out with a way that makes it easy to solve this problem without taking builders to court for fraud. And this actually, Sherry Lemley from Crylike had come up with something they were doing in Texas. And this is an easy way. It gets the um, building permit department out of trying to determine what is and isn't a bedroom and having them. The ACC used to say if it didn't have a closet or a door, it wasn't a bedroom. But then the builders were getting certificate of occupancies and then adding doors and, and closets. And we needed a subjective way. Uh, I mean, an objective way that the Doug's department can say, yes, this flies or no, it doesn't. And it seems that tying the size of the house to the permitted septic size is a way that keeps any kind of personal decision making out of it. And so that was what Jason put together for you all to look at.
It is definitely a problem. Doug, would you like to introduce your guest?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Linda, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce Bobby Buchanan. She's a local septic designer with about twenty years experience and she does live and work here in Bella Vista. So just wanted to, we spoke earlier today and she agreed to come on to answer any questions you may have or just kind of share her experience with you over the last twenty years in Bella Vista. What she's seeing with some of these older homes with septic systems that are failing and what she's seen on newer homes, both in Bella Vista and other places with uh, newly designed septic systems on small lots that are not meeting, are not gonna meet the needs of a larger family in the future. So Linda, I don't know if you've got anything else for Bobby or any?
I, I would just say that I've worked with Bobby for several years on a variety of projects and she's very knowledgeable and a good person to speak to the rest of council.
Here you go, Bobby. You're endorsed. Okay, any questions about this? It is certainly a problem. And it needs to be solved.
So, so there's a schedule. I don't, I didn't get that with the packet. Either I downloaded it too early or uh, was it in the?
It was a separate email.
I missed it.
We do, we do need to get the, the, the agenda of record is what's posted on the city website. It does need to reflect uh, the most recent agenda, so I hope we can do that. We had a previous agenda that hasn't been updated yet as well.
Well, the purpose of this.
They're both, they're both posted at City Hall, though.
Okay, but the, the purpose of, of having it here as a discussion is, is this something you want to address starting this month or do you want to wait until next year?
I would like to proceed with it immediately.
Yeah, why would we wait?
Okay.
I think it's important, it's important enough for us and future residents that we need to move ahead with it. In fact, uh, I would be inclined to want to adopt it by uh, as an emergency provision. Make it effective upon publication.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, Mayor, if we, if this is something we might want to go to third and final on uh, next week.
Plus an emergency. Is it an emergency, uh, Mr. Kelly? Is that appropriate for this?
Uh, you, if, if the council determines that the need to address septic is immediate and necessary for the, for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city, then you can adopt an emergency clause and, and that'll be appropriate. So uh, I can certainly put a draft together that has an emergency clause and then you all can make decisions as you see.
And we'll put it on next week. It's on next week's agenda. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes. Yes, that's, that's good.
I would, I would like to hear from Ms. Buchanan about some of her experience in Bella Vista, of what she's observed, if, if, if we could get her to do that.
I would also.
Bobby, you're on. I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
Oh, it's not muted, but I can't hear her either.
Or your volume's down?
Well, she's trying. I just, uh, just to be clear, the ordinance you're talking about that Linda presented, that's gonna be on the square footage? Bedrooms on septic by square footage?
Yes.
I think, I think Bobby may have some points on that, some things she's seen that would be beneficial for you all to hear.
While she's working on that, Wayne, I, I use the uh, city website in our meeting. I'm using that and it.
But Steve, this was not on your agenda. This was a discussion item because it came late. And we were asked to add it as a discussion item. If you choose to have it on next week's agenda, I'll put it on there and it will be on the agenda. But the reason it wasn't there tonight is because it was not presented as an agenda item.
Okay, it was mailed to all of us and I didn't know.
Yes, so that you had the background. And if you remember what I said in that email, it was so that you could review it for the discussion at this meeting.
Fair enough. I, I think the public should have access to that as well.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting for Bobby to see if she can get online? Because Linda or Doug, I'm, either one of you know, and, and maybe you said, I'm not sure. What, what, does it take a, a larger lot to put a uh, three bedroom, a four bedroom, five bedroom septic system in? Or is it just a larger tank and more lines? Uh, sorry, I, I don't.
That depends on how well the lot perks. So you have, you could have somebody that owns three lots. But if, if they don't perk very well, then you can only put a two bedroom septic. However, it could park well enough to put a five bedroom house on it. So every lot is different, whether you own one or four. So it's difficult, that's why they sent in an application originally, initially to the health department. And then Bobby goes, the health department hires someone like Bobby to go out and, and design a system that works on that lot. She decides how many lines, how many lateral lines, how big it is, how the size of the pipes, the size of the tank. And I don't want to be speaking for her, but yeah, they're all different. So you could have a, a lot on, a house on one lot that's, could perk better than a house on four lots. It just depends on the soul.
And it also, Steve, or who was that, Doug, depends on the topography of the lot and what you have for setbacks. If it's a corner lot, how it's shaped, what the frontage is, how big the house is, what the setback is. So how far back on the lot do you have, have to put the house, which way the topos go? So there's a whole, it, it's, it's a big deal. It's very involved.
Hey Bobby, I don't know if you could, if you got a phone number in the email, can you call that phone number on your phone? And maybe uh, John could get you in so that we could hear you. For a little over you, I think we may have discussed this uh, a couple of weeks ago. But the problem we see at C D S is someone will get a two bedroom approval from the health department, a septic for a two bedroom. Then they submit, that's a house plan with two bedrooms. But then when you look over the other side of the house, they've got a, a room with a closet that's listed as a workout room and then another room with a closet that's listed as a study. So we know that it's really a four bedroom house, but they got approval from the health department to build a two bedroom house. Well, the International Code Council tells us that if they tell us it's a study, we have to accept the fact that it's a study. We feel like we're setting the second owner up for failure by allowing them to build a four bedroom house on a two bedroom septic. Because the four years when that house gets sold, the chances are good that, that new owner is not gonna know that there's only a two bedroom septic in the backyard.
Okay.
Relative, relative to Doug's question too, is that the number of bedrooms determine the tank size specifically as well. I believe in the code, so. So if you have a two bedroom, it's one tank size, three bedroom, one tank size, four bedroom, another tank size. And then you have the seepage system or the, the pipes that have to take care of the waste.
Yeah, it goes from seven fifty to a thousand to twelve fifty.
Yeah. That's two to three to four?
Two, three, four.
Yeah.
No, we still can't hear you.
John, can you tell if she's called in?
We consider.
As far as I can tell, no, it looks like uh, just the video is all we can see.
Can you give, can you say the phone number so that Bobby can hear it? Bobby, can you hear us? Can you give a thumbs up if you can hear the phone number? Okay.
Yeah, it's, look in your uh, email invitation. I think it has a unique participant ID.
Okay.
And if council remember, will remember, Doug talked last month about an eighty nine hundred square foot one bedroom house that is now going to the P O A to get permission to cross common land to another lot because they have a malfunctioning septic system. Surprise, surprise.
And in talking with Bobby here today, who's been doing this for twenty years, she said that twenty years ago, that was. she said that 20 years ago, that was pretty common. She, she feels that Cooper even designed a lot of that common land behind these houses to help people with their septics when they got old or failed, and that that happened quite a bit 20 years ago. She said that more recently attorneys, uh, that have gotten involved have kind of stopped that. They still do it occasionally, but not quite as often as they used to. So, um, our fear is that, you know, someone puts in a two-bedroom septic with seven family members and then in 10 years, it's, 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 it's not doing its job anymore.
Uh, perhaps we could have Bobby come back, uh, next week for our regular meeting and be able to, uh, answer some of our questions then.
Sure, this was, this was her first time to use Zoom, so, um, we can practice that one time between now and then and invite her back. Thank you, Steve.
I, I see she's talking. We still can't hear her.
Yeah, it looks like she's trying to call in now.
Uh, she's, she's in. Let's see if we can hear her.
Oh, she is.
Okay, well, let's, Bobby, you keep trying and, and we have other agenda items. And, and if you're successful, then we'll come back to you. Is that okay? Alrighty.
Thank you.
Um, okay, let's go to the trails update, please, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the two trail projects. Uh, we've got one, the soft surface one, that's a paved connector, the Blowing Springs to Metfield. They have completed about two miles of the three miles of paved connector. They're anticipating another six to eight weeks of work to get them up to Commonwealth and they'll be done with that stretch of the trail. And then they're, after that, they're anticipating six weeks back in the park to finish up from the beginning of the park to where they originally started. So, uh, we're on the, we're on the homeward stretch here. Uh, things are going well. Good communication. We have meetings every two weeks with the contractors, engineers, uh, GTS consultants. So everything's going pretty smooth and a lot of work is getting done out there. Uh, soft trails, the little sugar trails are all but done. They're knocking out a few punchless items. Um, connecting a few last-minute places where they've had to reroute a couple of things, but it's, it's for the most part done.
And-
I've, I've got a question. I've got a question for Doug about the spring, uh, Blowing Springs to Metfield, uh, trail. Uh, have we, have we involved or have you involved, uh, our street superintendent? Because in some areas, uh, there may be issues that affect his roadway and drainage and other things related to what he's responsible for. So has he been involved at all?
Mike and I have communicated a couple of times on street cuts where, but, uh, they opted for us to get a contractor to go out and, and repair those. So, uh, he was consulted early on on some of the drainage issues, but I don't, I don't think Mike's out there much. We've got an inspector that we're paying from Garver to be out there every day. So, uh, Mi- Mike's not out there that much.
So he's looking after, uh, addressing any of those potential conflicts as they arise?
Well, I mean, we, we've only had one come up that I've had to call him on since this started. So that's not something I anticipate a whole lot of.
Okay. Bobby, are you with us?
They're off the road for 99% of the time. They're off, they're off of the road. I mean, there's some crossing. A lot of them are on private driveways that they're crossing and so not a whole lot of road work.
So that's six to eight weeks for the whole thing? Or just-
Six to eight weeks out to get up to Commonwealth and then another six to eight weeks back inside Blowing Springs.
Okay, so we're three months away. Mayor, have you called in?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there we are.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I've been really concerned about the issue with builders cheating. Um, I went to the health department and said, I've, I've heard something and you have a problem. The problem is that we only have a primary field in Bella Vista, no alternate, which means if we don't get it right and this thing fails, it gets extremely expensive for the homeowner. Um, I, I liked Linda's idea that she's trying to stop this. I'm not sure that house size is really effective, um, although that's certainly one thing. I would suggest that your attorney say something along the lines of, um, any reasonable person would say that this is a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom or a two-bedroom and, and, and make it broad enough to where your inspectors can use their judgment like it has been in the past. Somebody's been playing legal games trying to work around it, make a quick buck and leave Bella Vista in a world of hurt.
Bobby, are you talking about, are you talking about an appraiser or somebody on staff?
Uh, the, the concern I have is that, um, when I say legal stuff, apparently some builders have consulted legal lawyers to figure out how to be able to do this legally and get by with building a bigger house than what, uh, has been approved for. And, um, that, that is just a disaster waiting to happen. So when I say, you know, the, I went to the health department and talked to them. And I've talked to both Cheyenne and Doug about my concerns that, um, if builders cheat, then they walk away with a lot of extra cash and hurt, hurt the, the people that are buying the home. So if there was a way to, again, I'm not in a, but saying any reasonable person, whether it's appraiser, the inspector, the health department, anybody that has any, any dog in this fight can look at it. And we all know when we see a house plan, what the intent, where the, where the house is. Um, if we've got three bedrooms on one end, if we've got an obvious office out to the right, that's no big deal. If it's just off the living room or just off the kitchen, but when it's tucked in the back, it's not an office, it's a bedroom. And we can all look at the plan and see that regardless of what's written on there. So there must be a way that, that the board can create a scenario where when Cheyenne or Doug or whoever looks at the plan, they see that it's obviously the intent is the bedroom and any normal reasonable person will see that as the bedroom. And we will not be oversizing these houses for a tiny little lot that will not survive being overloaded on their septic all the time. So, um, I'm not sure that the house size itself is going to change that because you can make a tiny house and put lots of rooms. Um, but it's got to be done. And I agree. It, I think it's an emergency because houses are going up all the time. And we know this is being done. Uh, and Cheyenne and Doug don't have the authority to stop it, even though they're sure of it, because legality say that if, it says it's an office or a game room, I have to accept that. Um, and I, and I think that you all can write a rule such that they can look at that plan and say, this, this looks like a duck and it quacks like the duck. Um, septics do not work well when they're overloaded. And if you have a family of eight in a house with a two-bedroom septic, it's going to fail. And then we're looking at the drip irrigation system, if that even works at $25,000 plus thousand. So we have, we have a real problem and I think it's got to be solved sooner rather than later.
Um, I would, I would just have to add, we really can't pass an ordinance that says you have to have the amount of septic a reasonable person would determine to be appropriate because we have to have a more- Yeah. Because people will say, well, because what's reasonable to one is not reasonable to another. And so it really-
Right.
Not being a standard.
Right.
And so-
But the, the house, but the house plan, the house plan, when you look at the house plan and you have three rooms in the back, in the private living quarters with a bathroom in between them, that is a bedroom versus there's a room right up-
We've drafted, what we've drafted by referring to total square footage of the structure is if you want to call, you want to have one bedroom and one den and one office and one, uh, sunroom and, and one, uh, I don't know, you name it, game room, then you can call it whatever you want on those plans. It doesn't matter. But if that building is 2,500 square feet or larger, it's going to have to have a septic system that's going to be of a certain size. And that, that removes all the question and the judge of this, it removes the judgment call. And it also addresses the issue of having a, I mean, you, we can, we can, you can call them whatever rooms you want, but we know about how many people could fit in that house. And we know how much usage is going to be on that septic through toilet and sink and shower and all that. And we can, uh, provide enough septic coverage for that.
Mm-hmm. I would, I would hope so. And I certainly think that is better than nothing because I think we have a real problem. And, and if that is the way it works, um, it could, it could be tweaked. Um, but there are people that can, will make a house with lots of little rooms. And that's my concern, that they could still sell a small house and put lots of rooms in it and end up with, you know, somebody that moves in that's willing to have small, small rooms and multiple bedrooms that really doesn't get the septic. So I think, I, I definitely think you're, you're on the right track. And I, I think it's essential. I, I've heard particularly if one guy manages to get around it, then everybody else says, well, we might as well. And now you have all of these 0.25 acre lots that will not support a three-bedroom or bigger house. Um, with too big a house and, and, and fixing septics is a real problem in Bella Vista. So getting it right is real important.
Okay, Larry?
Ms. Buchanan, did you get a copy of the, uh, document that, that we're talking about, uh, working on or-
No.
Okay.
Yeah, she didn't say that, Larry.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't-
Send that off.
That would be-
Doug, Doug, can you send her a copy, please?
Sure.
What sounds to me like the problem she's referring to is that you have a house that's pretty small in square footage, but you jam a bunch of little bedrooms in it.
Yeah.
It makes something that, that, that caps a 2,500 square foot house on the amount of septic. And then they squeeze five bedrooms into a 25-bedroom house. You're, you're still going to have a family of six or seven move in there.
And, and does the, does the proposal now, Doug, does that cover that situation?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'd have to sit, look at it, Mr. Jason. I don't think-
No, I don't think we-
No.
We didn't address the situation of having, I mean, what, what you're talking about now is minutes, is number of bedrooms per square foot. Uh, is what you're talking about there. And then you, uh, that's an issue with regard, whether or not it's septic situation or not, and just almost like an occupancy issue. But I, you know, we have occupancy limits and square footage limits on based on zoning. And I can't recall, I, we just have to look and see what the minimums the house is you'd have to build on a single lot, R, R1 in Bella Vista. I don't remember what it is. Um, but, and then look at those numbers in comparison to what we're looking at in terms of the septic. Um, uh, that's really an additional issue we have not attempted to address thus far. So I would just offer that.
You know, to Bobby's point, I was just looking at the minimum four-bedroom septic system, structure 2,500 to 3,500 square feet. Uh, my house, well, it was probably 2,800, it's 3,000 because they converted like a screen to imports to an indoor room. But anyway, let's just say my house is 3,000 square feet. Right now I have what can be considered four bedrooms. And I have a little kind of, if you'll call it setting area out here, could easily be a fifth bedroom on a 2,500 to 3,500 square feet. This says four. All I'm saying is it could be, very easily be five, you know, to your point. And my house is 500 square feet less than the top end of this. And you can squeeze what? 500 square feet, a couple more bedrooms in if you wanted to. So I see what you're saying. I get your point, right? I just don't know how you write it in an ordinance where you don't have that much detail.
Hey Linda?
Yeah.
Well, the only way you could defend against that is to make the numbers even stricter than the numbers that Linda proposed.
Yes.
I think Linda's trying to make a point here. Linda, you're muted.
You could certainly do that. And I had considered making the numbers stricter. But you know, there's no perfect solution. We've got to stem this problem. I, I, I talked to an appraiser and they said, well, yeah, if I see that it's only got a two-bedroom septic, you know, or there's no closet, I won't count that as a bedroom. But then we still have the situation after it's appraised, they'll go add the closet and the door. We've got to start somewhere to get this problem stemmed. Or the 10, 10 years down the road, we're going to have a whole bunch of failed systems and a problem because as Bobby says, if you can put in a $25,000 drip irrigation system, that may be your only solution. We're looking at the potential of houses who have non-functioning septic systems who cannot solve that problem because there's nowhere to go to fix it. So it's, it's, it's a big accident waiting to happen.
I agree.
Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been told by a couple of builders, um, I think we're going to get a lot of pushback, no matter what we do from a couple hundred builders. But when a builder builds a three-bedroom house and gets it appraised, the difference in a three-bedroom house and a four-bedroom house can be up to $10 a square foot. Is that right, Linda?
Oh, sure, easily.
A lot of money that he loses when you change that from a four-bedroom to a three-bedroom could be 20, 25 grand. And so what some builders don't like is that they'll build a house next to a house that legitimately appraised for three bedroom, they built three bedroom, they got a three-bedroom septic. The guy next door comes along and builds a house on a three-bedroom septic, but he squeezes that fourth bedroom in there, he gets the additional $10 per square foot that the guy that did it the correct way doesn't get.
Are building codes written for the protection of the builder or for the resident, the buyer?
They're supposed to be to, for the safety of the occupant.
There you go.
And we've already stated that all this new construction is costing the city money, not bringing us in enough income. So maybe we just shouldn't be building so many houses in Bella Vista. Sorry. And I'm a real estate broker, so that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Well, I went through that experience when my, with my first house down here. And I told you about it when we talked about this problem the, the last time. And, and it is a, a real problem for those that pay attention to that aspect of buying a home in Bella Vista that's on septic. So I, I, it, it's a real issue for the unsuspecting buyer. And many of the people who buy here never lived on a septic, never lived in a rural area with septic systems before. And so have no, no understanding or no comprehension about the care and maintenance or the impact of, uh, how the bedrooms and the size of the system relate. So.
Okay, let's, um, Mr. Kelly, if you would, please add an emergency clause on to the existing one. Bobby, at least it's a place to start, uh, because right now we're wide open. We don't have anything. And we have to put something quickly because it is, it is frankly a disaster.
All right, I'll be happy to do that, Mayor.
Okay, everybody happy with that?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
I'm gonna put it on-
All right.
Thanks, Bobby.
Talk to you guys. Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mayor, I know this is going on pretty long, but I have a related question of this. I, I've wondered about it. It goes back in history before my time. So maybe your, uh, attorney Kelly or Jim Wozniak knows about it. Any place else I've ever lived, when you run the sewer line, everybody has to get on it to have no choice. And in Bella Vista, when they run a sewer line, you don't have to get on it until, uh, the house is sold, which I thought was just being nice to people, giving them a break. But, uh, I was wondering about that. Uh, you know, it affects the money that the sewer people get when they're trying to expand sewer. I think sewers need to be expanded in Bella Vista. And I think in the long run, they will be expanded because it becomes an environmental issue at some point. But, uh, I just wondered about that, that rule that we have that is, uh, pretty nice for people. But on the other hand, maybe comes around to bite us in another way.
Well, I can, I can tell you a little about that. Uh, the city passed that back in probably, uh, it was very early on when we became the city. Maybe in '08, early '09, somewhere in there. And the, it was a result of a, I guess, a compromise or a concern. Uh, because if we, for one thing, they wanted to, to encourage connection to sewer. And the city could mandate that. But there was also a great concern about just immediately mandating it, say within a period, say within one year, everyone's got to hook the sewer. Uh, there were a lot of financial considerations and, and there was really, I mean, it does cost some money to do that. There's a machine that has to go in the ground. There's, uh, pipe, you know, the existing septic tank has to be filled in. There's, there are expenses related to this. And so as best I can tell you, in terms of the policy, there was a compromise at the council level, uh, in discussion with Bella Vista Waste Water, which is a private organization, as you know. as you know, that the city would require a connection upon sale of the property. And so that way it could be factored into a real estate agreement, a transaction in terms of cost at that time. And so I know that I wasn't involved in this litigation because I had moved into, to work in Fayetteville at this time, but the city was sued about the legality of that ordinance and the court determined that it was valid and that the city did have the authority, which I, which I think clearly it did, but it was, it did go to court. And so our existing ordinance as it is, has been deemed to be enforceable and, and legal and constitutional in court. And so as, and I, I don't remember what the number is or how many feet it is, but I do know over a period of time, as the wastewater system, at the time it was Tom Luer's, they would extend these lines out for whatever reason, however they made that decision, I don't know. And there's a master list that was created that showed every address that was within that distance of the, of the latest sewer lines so that everyone knew who was now under that, that obligation to do that. And so the idea being that with time, eventually all those houses will end up on sewer. So obviously they couldn't replace their sewer. Well, I had to, I, I think we addressed no replacing of sewer system, septic system. I, I, it's been too long since I looked at it. I don't want to commit on that. I should know because I wrote it, but I don't remember.
Well, Jason?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I was here for all of that.
Yeah.
And if you built a new one and the sewer wasn't the next number of feet, you got on it. If you built a house that didn't have it, you worked something out. And again, so many feet from the line, you work it out with the new builder as to who was paying to get you hooked on before you could make it final. But you didn't make anybody, if you were already there and if it went past your house, they didn't force anybody on. That was your option.
It was, it was upon sale.
It was upon sale that when you got put on. Or you could go on your own. But if you did sell the house between the builder, the buyer and the seller, they had to work out a deal. They had to put septic in if you were within so many feet of.
Exactly.
But you didn't force anybody on if you were already there and it went down your street.
Right.
And then there's a, there's a third way. And that is if the septic system fails and the sewer is available, the Department of Health can order you to connect.
Yeah.
I just always noticed that and anywhere else I'd ever been, when the sewer line comes through, you're on it. You have no choice.
And, and those rules, those rules, John, are conventionally and traditionally, when the municipality owns the sewer system, that becomes a one year thing, one year upon a operation mandatory connection. And so everybody plans for it and, and there it goes. Yeah. When I built, when I built my house, it was already in the street and I had the option of going sewer or going septic. And at that time, the price was exactly the same, almost to the dollar. And so I just, hey, it's right there, put it in. Because I had had septic problems at the other house I was in. I went from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, from two people to four people, and yeah, I got the problem. And they almost couldn't put in a new system because of my front yard.
Another consideration, John, is because it is a private sewer system, it's not a public sewer system. And I know one of the concerns, and this is what, was also what was litigated, of course, we adopted the ordinance before it was ever litigated. So, but there was a little bit of concern about requiring the hookup to the private service because it, it mandated you be a customer of, of the private sewer. And it's not the same thing. This is one of the things that makes Bella Vista unique and in a way, it makes everything we do legally difficult. Whereas a lot of cities, it could just be auto, you just, you know how to do it. Here we don't because we've got all these unique situations and relationships. But that also.
Yeah, I can see that legal issue. Well, thank you for that.
Okay, time is marching on in the essence of it. Doug, or excuse me, John, update please on the impact fees.
Oh, okay. Our outside consultant is working on the impact fees and they're, you know, dealing with the various relevant department heads, meeting with mainly by Zoom meetings and gathering all the relevant information they need. And so it's in process and as far as I can tell, up to this point, it, it's on schedule. They have spoken to the great majority of the folks and are lining up the few that they have not. I've been on some of those calls and I, I personally, I've been pleased with their style and the way things are proceeding.
Yeah, I was supposed to speak with them tomorrow afternoon and they've pushed that off to Monday because of the last minute commitment they have.
Mayor, could I, if I could speak just for a few minutes here about impact fees? And I've, I've been supportive of this concept and I'm really trying to wrap my mind around it. Along to a couple of different things that I've, I've advocated for, and that is that we try to keep this as simple as possible. We're just starting off. If, if we end up doing impact fees, we ought to keep it simple in the beginning. We ought to also try to work as diligently as possible and even accelerate the process. So work with a sense of urgency on this. And there's a reason for that. And if I could, I'd like to share my screen one more time here, see if I can get it going. This, this is, these are numbers that we've all seen before. I hope everybody can see it. We don't see it in graphical form, but this shows our new construction permits over the last six years. So you can see we've gone from 68 new homes permitted in six, in 2015 to 386 year to date this year. I presume we'll go over 400 at the rate that we're going, yeah. So look how this has just blown up on us, especially in the last few years. You know, nearly 900 homes probably in the last three years. And so as these homes are built, it puts additional burden on our infrastructure. And who should pay for that burden? Right now it's all paid for by existing residents of Bella Vista. And I don't necessarily want to throw a wet blanket on new construction. I think it's, I think it's good, but I do think this is an appropriate case for impact fees. They may be modest in the beginning. I think, I was trying to do some analysis. Again, this comes right out of our budget and you may just want to kind of focus on the bottom line here. This is our capital plans for the next five years. 2.7 million, 2.7 million, 2.2 million, almost 2 million, one, 2 million in 2025. And that's projecting out five years. I presume we'll find more capital needs along the way. So what that tells us is A, we've got this real intense growth in home construction here. We also know we have capital needs over the next five years. What could we do modestly, get this ball rolling so that we can make use of, of these people that are coming to Bella Vista? Because the secret is out now, right? There's no secret. Bella Vista is an outstanding value proposition to anybody looking for a place to live. And that's why we're seeing this growth. I did total permits through November. That's 386, right? We just saw that. Well, what's the total square feet? It's a million square feet. What's the total valuation? We use, Doug would know more about this than I do, but we use an international code council equation for determining based on square feet, what's the valuation of the home? It's a hundred million dollars worth of homes already permitted this year. And if we just added a 1% impact fee, we would be raising for this year, whoops, a million dollars. So if we had impact fees in 2020, we'd have a million dollars to work with in our capital needs over the next five years. And that's just 1%. So if you look at that, the valuation that we're coming up with says that it costs about a hundred dollars per square foot to build a house. I think that's probably a little low. I'm not sure why, but I think we'd be pivoting off of this valuation equation to determine what our impact fees might be. And so if you're building an average home of 25, 2,600 square feet, then your valuation's going to be 259,000. And guess what? Your impact fee is going to be $2,592. So that all goes into the pot. It all goes to capital funds. We have capital needs. And then why is it important that we move quickly? Again, on a monthly basis, this is just for the month of November. We had 35 new housing permits here and we authorized 86,000 square feet. So just in the month of November, if we had impact fees in place at just 1%, and these are all just theoretical numbers at this point, but if we just had a 1% impact fee, we would have banked $88,440 for capital needs. So I hope that helps kind of everybody get their mind wrapped around. This is, this makes sense for Bella Vista and it's something that we need to move as quickly as possible. Obviously, we need the expertise of this consultant. I'm not trying to get in front of them, but I would encourage them, let's just keep it simple. When I look at our capital needs, I see roads across the top as being our single source of greatest capital needs. And we're going to have that every year, almost to the tune of a million bucks a year. In fact, we don't have plans to spend a million a year, but I guarantee you, we could. And the more construction that we have, the more roads that we end up building. And so if we just took roads alone, we could spend a million dollars a year. So.
Well, you know, we already.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm sorry. We already spent 1.2 million on just resurfacing existing roads, let alone building new ones.
Right.
And we're going to talk in a few minutes, you know, about the 150 foot policy that we have.
Right.
You don't want to take it all the way down the street. My God, we'd go broke because we have to make sure that we're servicing the existing roads. Now, what we're doing in the budget, if you, if you saw it in the operations side under Mike's normal resurfacing, there's 1.2. But in the capital plan, there's another one point, I believe, four. So it's going to be 2.6 because we need to stay ahead of it. And we're still working with the plan that was put together in 2015 and 2017 by the, the consultants that came out and graded every street. And, and you're right, you know, Steve, to put it into perspective, since the end of 2013, we have 1,337 new homes as of the end of November. That's aggregate growth of over 3,400%.
Yeah. Yeah.
It just blows you away.
It really does. I mean, I can't even think of what 3,000% means, but I do know from 2015 to 2020, we've gone from 68 to 386. It's almost a factor of six times greater than where we were just five years ago.
Okay, Larry?
A, a comment just for reality sake, the builders will say, gee, my permit fees in Bella Vista all of a sudden quadrupled because of your impact fee. In essence, that's, and, and you also said that, that if you had $2,700 would be the impact fee. That's about four times the 900 permit, permit fees that they pay to Doug. And so we'd be collecting another 24, 2,500 perhaps at that 1% value on a new house. In addition, you'll find some sticker shock and you'll hear the builders screaming loud and clear.
Well, let's remember, we lowered the, we lowered the building cost by 12 to $1,300 when we took out the third piece of rebar and we also changed the frost line date.
Right. I understand that. I mean, you look at the permit fees collected, you can see that.
I anticipate you're, you're exactly right about that, Larry, but I, I don't fear that objection because what if, what if, you know, there is price sensitivity in building a house? What if it means that we don't have 386 the next year, that we only have 300? That's, that's not a bad.
It's not all bad.
Right.
It's not all bad at all.
On that subject, interestingly, the consultant on impact fees, who've done these all over the country, I think he's done like 900 cities. He believes that the impact fee doesn't slow down the building at all.
No.
Not one iota. I do believe builders will complain about it, but he has just found places where people want to build, they want to build and places where they don't want to build, they don't want to build. You know, you're either attractive or you're not. So I was interested, I found that interesting. He had that opinion because I would have thought it was slowing up some.
Hey, Bentonville enacted them and man, there's, look at what's going on down there. Hardly anything's happening.
Yeah.
Because you can't afford a lot. Several years ago, but it was the very same thing. The builders came back screaming and hollering and look at it down there. It had absolutely no impact whatsoever.
Most experience is that it's a temporary, temporary slowdown and then they pick back up to normal.
Well, it would raise the price of the house and in doing so, it's raising everybody's market value. Yeah, the next house is going to be a little bit more expensive per square foot, but there's people that want to come here. They're coming here from all over. They're coming from Texas, from California, from neighboring states. Everybody's trying to get to Bella Vista right now. And the growth that they're driving and the capital investment that's required, it's not fair for the Bella Vista residents to carry the entire burden of that.
Yep, I agree. Okay, in the interest of time, now can we move on?
Yes.
Okay. The next is the 2040 plan. Doug and I have been talking about this. We really need some direction from yourself and not tonight, but how do we move forward? And do we need to have a separate head inside Doug's organization to actually steer us through this and work through all the changes in the ordinances and everything else that needs to be done? And what does that person need as a background? Is it an engineer? And maybe we could make use of an engineer because we have Carver on call at the moment and it might be cheaper to keep it in-house and keep that person occupied doing other things as well. So what I asked Doug to do was to get in touch with Graham Smith back at Gould Evans to find out based on their experience, how do other cities kick this off and get started? So Doug, have you had a chance to speak to Graham?
I have and I've emailed him all those questions earlier today after you and I spoke. He hasn't.
Mayor, one thing I would want to just make sure everyone realizes is that this is largely also within the area of the planning commission. So you've got, of course, you've got to have internal people developing, developing ordinances, developing requirements and all that, which, which are going to go to the planning commission. But you do have that resource of a planning commission to sort of filter through a lot of the technical things to, to bring, to bring something to the council in accordance with the, with the plan. So you do have that.
Okay.
But our, but our planning commissioners really are not involved normally with the creation and the preparation of these. That's a staff function. They deal, they, they deal with the fine tuning of it and then bringing it forward for ordinance adoption. So I, I understand what you're saying. But I think we need, usually many of the items have, have to do with planning code adjustments. Sometimes they go back to the planning organization who did the master plan for you and say, would you give us a hand at helping us to fine tune our, our, our code for these areas to get us to implement that? And it's a staff function along with maybe some outside help that usually I've seen it works. If there are technical issues, then usually it goes to the engineering department and they, they work with planning or whoever to create the ordinances to make it happen. So.
Jason, what are you, what are you talking about helping us determine what the head count might look like or, or moving the 2040?
No, I'm, I'm not talking about internal head counts. I'm just talking about technically moving the plan forward. If we're going to need to have new zones, if we're going to need to change existing zones, you know, all that sort of stuff is what, is what I'm talking about. Now, in terms of internal needs, because it will, Mr. Williams is correct, it's going to take staff to quickly on paper to get it to them. But, you know, in terms of just working through the policy of it, you do have that resource. That's all I'm talking about.
Okay. But just to let you know that we haven't forgotten about it and we're still moving forward. Okay, I have one more, the very last. It's something that Larry brought in at the end of day, talking about the street paving policy that the street department or the street committee currently has in place. Larry, do you want to take us through it quickly, please?
I guess, I would like to see that implemented. I didn't realize it was only a policy of the street committee and that's made up of you and, and John and, and Mike. So I didn't realize it was that. Uh, so I didn't realize it was that simple. It's something that could have been easily taken care of with, uh, a reversal by that committee to, uh, to change the policy. Uh, I think you have with the adoption of the twenty forty plan, the authorization to do that. But I would like to take more formal action on it so that you guys don't get caught in the, in the, uh, in the firing range or, uh, that of the builders by, uh, now rescinding and not doing any paving work in two thousand and twenty one. So I, I think the council should be involved in that action to rescind the, uh, the policy of the, uh, street committee and make it effective January first so that no paving would be done in two thousand and twenty one, regardless of what perhaps commitments might be out there. I think, I think we're committed. Go ahead.
I think we have to stick with the commitments. If you want to rescind it, that's fine. But there have been promises made for two thousand and twenty one. I don't think we should go down that road.
Prom, prom, promises.
So what are you going to replace it with, Larry?
Well, yeah, replace it with nothing. The impact fees will take care of the paving part of it. The, the, uh, the, uh, point being is that we are still obligated to provide implanted road right of ways that we own and received as when we incorporated to make them passable, uh, in with an all-weather road for the property owners who live on it as well as for public safety vehicle access. And so that's an obligation we have regardless. The paving is merely frosting on a cake or a cupcake uh, by paving only a hundred and fifty feet of it. And I think rescinding that effective immediately is not an issue because we are obligated to provide them with a ready access. The hundred and fifty feet is, uh, I think n- not a huge issue to me.
Right. Okay. So let's say that we rescind it and we don't have the impact fees in, in place yet. I'm not sure if you've ever been in this chair with all the builders coming at you all the time. And that's why we put it into play because they want us to pave a quarter mile, half a mile down because some, because they're building a house at the end of the street. I can't afford to do that.
I, I understand that. And I've been in that chair a lot of times with, with developers and sometimes the answer is N O, and it's a simple, simple word, short, brief and to the point, uh, uh, it's, it's a generosity on our part that we even paved the hundred and fifty feet. We are obligated because we are a city, we own the street to make it passable for all of the residents and property owners on that street. That's an obligation we have regardless. That's a cost we have regardless. To pave it is not an obligation we need to meet. Or pave any part of it until we can determine what these impact fees are going to do.
I think you're putting the cart before the horse myself. I think we see what the impact fees are going to do for us, then establish what we're going to do as far as a policy. If you want to rescind it or council feels that it should be rescinded for two thousand and twenty one, I'm fine with that, but we have to keep the obligation we've made to the home buyers for this year.
I, I, I don't know how you've made an obligation for next year.
Well, that, that policy wasn't set by city council, was it? Was it set by the streets committee?
Yeah.
Committee. Yeah.
And the council can rescind it at any time.
Well, let me, let me speak. He really, it's the, it's the mayor's policy. The street committee has no legal authority. So, I mean, they, it certainly was done in consultation with them, I guess, but the mayor made a decision that we weren't going to pay to pave more than a hundred and fifty feet of street to a new house.
That's true.
So if you rec, if you pass an ordinance, I mean, uh, you, you're basically wanting to, there's a line there where you can't usurp the mayor's authority. Now, certainly you can control the budget. So what the city council could do is pass a resolution that restricts two thousand and twenty one budget funds to say that it cannot be used for paving to new structures or something along those lines. The city council could do that. I don't think you could pass an, an ordinance that just says the mayor's policy is reversed. I think, because then I think you're usurping on the administrative role of the mayor and the discretion that the mayor's office has.
Okay.
You can limit, you can limit the budget funds, Larry. You could, you could definitely, uh, propose a resolution that would restrict two thousand and twenty one budget funds to say it cannot be used in this circumstance that you're talking about. I think that's the way you would have to attack it for the council, for the council to have a say and for the mayor's policy, for it not to be a direct attack on the mayor's administrative.
And, and, and that was not in a, an intent to attack the mayor's policy. It was, it was my understanding, it was a policy of the street committee and that's how it got implemented. Uh, and I would like to, uh, discontinue that as of January first of this year. So however, we need to do it and, and make it, uh, appropriate with, uh, procedurally. I would like to do that. I don't know how the other council members feel, but I think we need to, we need to stop it. It's in the twenty twenty plan to discontinue that. Uh, I'd like to do it now.
Can I ask a question? Do we, do we always automatically pave the first hundred and fifty feet of a street? That put a house that has, there's been, previously been no other homes and they put a home back, let's just say, I don't know, three hundred or four hundred feet or five, three hundred yards. I know, I believe I've been on some streets recently where that is the case. And the first hundred and fifty feet has not been paved, but the road is being made, whatever term you use, Larry, uh, passable, drivable or whatever. You know, it has the white, uh, rock down. It has the road infrastructure, but the first hundred and fifty feet is not paved. So we don't always do that. What, what triggers whether we do the first hundred and fifty feet or not? Does, does the builder have to ask us to do it? Because we, we don't automatically do it, right?
No, we don't automatically do it. What triggers it is the builder typically is building a home on the corner. And once it paved down to their street, if another builder comes in and he wants to build way down at the end, I'm not paving it all the way down to the end. I'm only going to do a hundred and fifty feet and that's two lots. That's one on each side of the street. That was the purpose of the whole thing.
Now, I guess what I'm saying, I, I've seen where there's houses been built down, but the first hundred and fifty feet has not been paved.
That's right.
So, so.
Because they built further down the road.
And I, and I guess, Mayor, my answer would be if you build on the corner, put your driveway on the paved street that's in front of your house, not on the one that's on the side. If you put it on the side, then you're subject to the gravel driveway or gravel roadway until the city paves it. Well, I don't think we have an obligation to pave that for a side driveway.
Perfect. Yeah, that'd be perfect, Larry, if we didn't have P O A common land in between the paved street and the lot in which they're about to build. And that's common. That's a problem we've got. They cannot put a driveway over the, over the common land.
I guess I'd like to see that example. I, I, I can't quite visualize it.
Time and time again, John, we have seen that on so many different plots when people come in and they want to, and they want to put a house in. But I would, I would strongly recommend that you do not back away from the promises that have been made in two thousand and twenty one.
Oh, I'd like to know where the, who, who, who has the promises and where the lots are.
Well, Mike Button will have that and the streets, and the street committee will have it. And it's not just me. I rarely attend. It's John, Mike. Um, and is Lee still on that as well, John?
Uh, yeah, Lee Clark's on it. And, uh, I can't think of the other guy. The guy who moved from Plano is on it.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Uh, his name escapes me right now. He's a good guy, has good background. I wanted to give a little history on this. What happened is, you know, we had a problem in that we have these roads that aren't very well developed. And, uh, people would go build a house at the end of them. It'd be like a thousand feet. And we were paving it and Mike Button says, we're going broke on this. So I thought it would have to be an ordinance also, and Jason Kelly uh, very wisely gave me the counsel, we could just make this, uh, have it be a mayor's policy. And that way it's more flexible. Okay, so you want to do something differently. Now, what has, uh, happened more recently, Mike Button has told me in the last, oh, half year or so, that this, uh, rule has actually had the desired effect that builders have reacted to it. And so they're building houses closer to paved roads and not, you know, a thousand feet in. Because, uh, most people want it paved. And the other, uh, thing Mike Button has told me, you know, this, as you know, we have quite a topography here in Bella Vista. And a lot of times when he has gravel roads and whatnot, it ends up being quite expensive. Uh, because, uh, you know, he'll have the gravel road and you think, oh, this is way better than paving it. Well, then it rains, it gets washed out and have to come back and fix it. And, and that happened several times. You know, so it's a little bit of a challenge that way. So not having a paved road can be a pain in the neck, basically, depending on where it's at, was, was his, uh, insight. We're, you know, we're constantly having to go back and do something with it for various reasons, mostly weather. But, uh, anyway, he's been quite pleased with the thought, the hundred and fifty foot rule, uh, causing builders to act in a different way. But I'd be happy to round up with him and see what his thinking is lately. It was several months ago that he told me that. So, uh, you know, I can give you guys feedback as far as what his thinking is about it. Because he's certainly closer to it than I am. You know, I have meetings with him once in a while and go over things, but he's working with people every day. And you know what? The mayor is talking about commitments. Somebody's gone and gotten a permit and they're going to build a house and it's going to take a while, you know, three, four, five months, whatever. And he understands the, uh, the rule, the hundred and fifty foot rule and has relied upon that. So that's what the mayor is talking about. You know, guys in Bill building the house and he's got the idea from us, we're going to pave a hundred and fifty foot. And it wouldn't go over big to go back and say, oh, well, we'll change our minds. We're not doing the hundred and fifty foot after all. There's no written contract. But he has what, uh, lawyers would call detrimental reliance. You know, he has relied on what we told him, even it's, even if it's orally and the policy isn't writing.
Well, what would be, what would be?
That's what the mayor is talking about. It's, there's a bunch of people in process and now they think we're, uh, paving a hundred and fifty foot and believe me, they'll raise quite a ruckus if we're not.
Okay, yeah, but, but we do get to end the process at some point. So how long?
Oh, yeah. We could end it except for the people we've promised. We, if we would like.
Saying, there's, uh, there's no record of promises per se, but would we be able to say something like effective April first? This is no longer our, our practice.
Oh, sure. Yeah. If we wanted to do that, sure, we could. Yeah. That was part of the idea that Jason advised really of, hey, if you're just making a policy, be a little more flexible. You might think someday you want to do something else.
Okay, Jason. I guess I'd like to see how many, how many properties are affected here, uh, to know whether it's a big problem or a little problem.
And we can get that from Mike. Jason?
Well, I just wanted to add that, I, I think you've come to this, but you would need to sunset it. In other words, you would need to say for all building permits issued after a certain date in the future, that this will be the policy. Or that we will not, uh, not, or that we will not extend our paved any streets. Now, let me, let me add, throw this in because you got your impact fee study that's being under, that's going underway now. Part of the impact of a new structure to us and, and our expert would need to, to consult with us on this is the cost of that asphalt for a hundred and fifty feet minimum. And if we come through and say, no, no, we're not going to pay for any of that, then that's no longer our expense and could probably reduce the impact fee. Because we're, you only collect the impact fee on what it's, the impact it has on us for new stuff. So, uh, that's something to consider and something we would need to consult with the impact fee, uh, study people on. Just a thought that came to my mind. Don't know if it would be an issue, but just thinking about it, it might be.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I'd like to proceed with, uh, terminating this process and I'd like more information about how many permits we have commitments on. Uh, I'd like to still, uh, then adjust it by, uh, not having any monies, uh, spent next year for, for this hundred and fifty foot street extension.
So, by the way, my, my, my math might be wrong, but so we're talking about a hundred and fifty feet, five thousand four hundred and eighty feet's a mile, right?
Yep.
Which is point oh, two, seven, seven, three, seven. So even if it's asphalt, a hundred and fifty feet is one thousand six hundred and ninety one dollars if it's asphalt. Now, I know we have labor and whatever involved and, but if it's chipping, which is twenty five percent of this cost, what's that? Four hundred and some dollars if we do the first hundred and fifty feet. But, but you can't, not chipping, I'm sorry, uh, uh, slurry. So anyway, I just thought I'd put a, a dollar figure to it.
It's not, Doug, it's, Doug, it's not on, not on a, a, a rational basis of one to one because each one of these, these locations are different and they become mobilization costs, which probably double, triple, quadruple the cost of your, your pavement.
Yeah, it's just the cost of the surface. I'm just saying, I just wonder what the number was, so I just thought I.
So the, so the impact to the city is really three to four to five times that when you talk about paving only a hundred and fifty feet here and a hundred and fifty feet there, if they have no other paving, uh, within very close proximity, you've got that mobilization cost which really jumps it up.
I don't think it's that high because we are always making sure that when we put together the plan for paving, that if we've got the hundred and fifty feet, that it's part of the area where they're paving so that you don't increase their cost.
Well, I would venture.
He'll get you a list of all the commitments made for two thousand and twenty one. Um, I think I, I agree with, uh, Steve and Jason. We then sunset it by a certain date. So, uh, John, if you'd talk to Mike, please, and, and get the listing and see what the, uh, the commitment dates are for two thousand and twenty one.
Sure.
And then we can freeze it and, um, and then Larry will be able to have that in place.
Mayor, are there only commitments where permits have been issued already?
Yes.
So it sounds like, I, I think everybody's pretty close to being on the same page here. It sounds to me like what we would do is say, uh, uh, effective with any new permit, uh, as of this date, we, we don't have that policy in place anymore. So it could effectively, I mean, I don't think, Larry, I don't think you can achieve the, the outcome you're hoping for, which is there's no spend on this in two thousand and twenty one. But we're certainly seeing, uh, the, the way to sunset this. And maybe it's no new commitments will be made. No new building permits will come along with a commitment, uh, to do the hundred and fifty feet. So.
And, and you'll get a, and, and Doug will get a rash of applications that'll come in, uh, by Friday.
So what? So what? And by the way, I'm not going to vote for that. I'm going to stick with how we currently are going. So don't go saying what you think I'm going to do. I'm going to stick with what the plan currently is.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting the council will vote for it. I'm only suggesting that if, if it gets out that we're going to do something like this, there'll be a raft of applications in, so they beat the deadline.
Or your phone will be ringing off the hook.
It just tells you, you don't take away the street paving and institute the impact fee in the same month.
Sometimes you better rip the Band-Aid off, Doug. Come on.
So what was it? So is there a policy? So, okay. You know, people are doing fifteen, a hundred feet, a thousand feet or whatever, and we, we couldn't afford to do that. So what would be the benchmark for when we would decide that we need to, to pave a street? How many residences would it take? Seventy percent of a street filled up before we would pave it? Do we have a policy in place for that? What if a builder comes into a cul-de-sac, has a street into it and he's going to build on all, you know, four or five of the, of the lots that are on that cul-de-sac? Would we then pave that street? Or is it the same policy in place?
There's no policy in place, although for two builders that I can think of over the years where they did exactly that, Doug, they bought all the, I think it's six lots in a cul-de-sac and they took permits to build and we paved the whole cul-de-sac.
That seems sensible. It's almost like a case by case basis. You have to kind of hear it out, see what they're, what they've got in mind and, uh.
Yeah, it's very difficult to make a rule to cover every situation. You know, people kept bringing up different hypotheticals. And as the building has gotten more robust, you know, there are builders starting to talk about developing whole streets and stuff. And then, well, then there's two different questions. One is, well, if they're building several houses, then maybe it makes sense to pave that street. And the second question is, when do you pave it? Because the construction tears up the street.
Oh, yeah, you don't.
You know, you get five or seven houses and those houses say, hey, we think this should be paved. But if you pave it and there's still twelve empty lots. But if you pave it and there's still 12 empty lots. You're going to tear up your brand-new pavement too.
Sorry, Doug, go ahead.
I said, most subdivisions get paved during the development stages before the houses are built.
This is one of the things, this is how Bella Vista is different. Because you basically had plats that were approved back 40 years ago and whatever method there was with the county to get these plats approved, which may have been no more than just going to the county and filing them. But they were approved and the public rights of way were accepted without them being finished. So they basically were just dirt paths or gravel and as 40 or 50 years roll by, they become two ruts through the woods and they're still in their public rights of way. So I think what, one thing Larry said earlier is true. We have to make them passable. But there's nothing legally that says we have to pave them or make them, bring them up to any particular nice standard, if you want to say. And so one thing a builder risks if they know that there's no obligation, you know, most cities would never do this. Most cities, if you're a new developer and you're putting something in, you pay to improve the street. And, and, and we're paying to improve the street and subsidizing home builders for every house they're building. That's a tremendous benefit we provide.
That's easier to do though, when the subdivision owns all 80 lots on the street. In Bella Vista.
It's the subdivision approval process. So, you know, if we were, if this had been done when there was a city there, then, or if it had been say in our planning jurisdiction, which is where you catch a lot of this stuff. You get stuff that could come into the city. You've got a standard that says, okay, all streets in the subdivision have to be asphalt, curb and gutter, so many feet wide, so many feet deep, all that stuff. And it has to be built to that standard before we'll take it. And then, of course, the city government takes on the responsibility of maintenance. And so here, the streets were half-done, public, it's yours. And now we're the government with, with charge of it. And so we, and what we were doing years ago, when we first became a city is, I think they were paying to extend streets to the house. No matter two or 1,000 feet or more. And so that's what brought this current situation. So it's a little history, but anyway.
Yeah, the only subdivision that we've really paved since I've been mayor is the country club Villas. And Cooper was made as part of the agreement. He put in the curbs and gutters. And then we went in and inspected. And then once they were up to snuff, then we accepted. He also put in sidewalks. That was part of the deal.
Not to, not to, I'm not advocating this, but I just want to tell you a little bit about your authority here. The city would have the authority, in my opinion, to adopt a regular, an ordinance that said, before you can build a new house, you, builder, you've got to pay to improve the street to the house. Because we can, as a development requirement, we can, if it's, if it's connected to that development and it's proportional to the impact that development has on the city, the government can require a developer to do that. Now, that would make a lot of lots in Bella Vista unbuildable because they're too far out. They've never, it might, you mean, if you want to talk about your, your, your new master plan with Mr. Williams has been, if one of, say, for example, we were encouraging infill, where we wanted people to build on lots that were already next to where utilities and streets were improved, boy, that would carry out that plan. So that's, and that brings you around, how do we decide how to implement our plan? Those are the kind of decisions you make. Because you determine, you use the authority you have to carry out the plan that you have for the future. So I, that would meet, not meet with much approval in Bella Vista if we started requiring pay the developer or the builder to build, to finish streets out to a certain standard to a driveway. But if you want to know about what, how far the city's authority goes, I think you could, you could go that far. I really do.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess in my experience, Jason, you, that you would quite be able to push it that far. The streets have been dedicated, dedicated as public rights of way. Theoretically, they were originally prepared in a somewhat appropriate construction fashion to make them passable supposedly. No access, no use. They've deteriorated probably because they weren't fully constructed to a standard. But the builder, because all of the lots are sold and the developer's no longer in the picture, we might have, make it difficult.
It is a different scenario, Larry. You're right. Because if you're talking about, say, in terms of a traditional commercial development and they're going to put it on a two-lane highway and we, and now the master plan says it's going to be a five, four-lane with a turn lane and a traffic signal, then the government can come in and make them pay for all that expansion. Again, it's unique, Larry. I'll tell you, it's not, you know, we, I just know the constitution allows us to do what's connected and what's proportional. And, and so, you know, we, there's no hard and fast rule of how much that is. But I think by us paying for it, we're definitely not required to do that except for scenarios where we have been doing it and we have, people have developed an expectation through the issuance of a building permit that we do that. I think, I think we would face difficulties if we didn't do it on the existing building permits but allowed future building permits to be on notice and to not have that expectation.
Okay. One, one last question. John mentioned two other names and those were who again?
People are on the street committee, Lee Clark. There are citizens that have just volunteered to be on committee. One is Lee Clark. And the other guy, I couldn't recall his name, but he used to be, he has a really good background. He used to be, he's a newer member. He used to be very much involved in the city of Plano. And, you know, had a number of city jobs there. So he's a really good, good resource for a volunteer.
So, so you have a street committee, so you, you must keep minutes then, right? Somebody keeps. Well, it's a city committee. I would think there would be minutes kept of actions taken and agendas and things like that.
I can tell you, Larry, because they don't have any legal authority, there's no minutes. They don't have any legal authority. They're, they basically just consult. And then if the mayor wants to implement a policy or if they want to make recommendations to the council, they can do that. But they don't have any legal authority to act. So they're.
They rarely meet. They don't even know each other's names, apparently.
Evidently.
No, but it's, it's the same as the library advisory board. It's the same as the arts council. They don't keep minutes, but they don't have any authority. Okay, it's been a long one, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for your patience.
We, sorry to screw up your vacation.
Actually, a good meeting.
See you next Monday.